Okay, it's Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, and we're going to start the Town of Sangerville Board of Selectmen meeting. It's four o'clock. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Item two, approval of the minute, Select Board meeting five, four, 2022.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Well, three in favor. Item three, review of treasurer's warrants, payroll thirty-nine, forty-one, accounts payable forty and forty-two.
Make a motion, approve Amy's read.
Second.
All in favor? Three in favor? Open session? None? Old business. That says none, but is, are we going to stick with none?
We wanted to talk about Soas Mills.
Okay, so we'll put that under old business. Where do we stand?
I did, Zach Herrick did come in, we had a discussion, and then he came back in today, and he looked at the culverts and he said that nine should have to be replaced because there's a rock in it. And two is bendy, but the other ones have been bended, but it shouldn't be an issue and...
He's got the number. When he says nine, he means number nine.
Number nine, yeah. Number nine would be closest to the Anderson Road, so.
Okay, alright, move with that one. You're probably very familiar with that one.
And he believes it's a result of not having it trench paved.
So, he thinks nine failed?
Because there's a rock in it. There's a big rock in it.
Over on top of it?
Yes.
Pushing it down.
Pushing it down.
Okay, okay. So, but he would have excavated that rock when he put it in, wouldn't he?
He would have put it in.
Unless he put it back in.
He would have put it back in.
His group put it in.
Okay, so the rock that he put in there destroyed the culvert that?
Number nine.
Okay, I'm just trying to get clear on, and none of the others he thinks need to be replaced?
No, maybe two because it's more bendable than the rest of them, but he said they're all, they're all a little crinkled and bent, but they should be fine.
Crinkled, they're all compromised a little bit?
Yes.
Back to number nine, so he, did you, I, did I hear, did he say that if we had trench paved it, it would have been fine? Is that his position?
That's his position.
Even with the rock?
Yes, with all of them, they would have been fine, yeah.
Interesting.
And he spoke to someone from DOT.
Who confirmed that?
Yeah, that, yes.
Did he tell you who that was?
The superintendent of DOT, he's always.
I think we need to follow up.
But that's what he said when he came in today.
Okay, no, I'm, I know you just, it just seems like, I mean, we have plenty of gravel roads that have culverts. We don't, they're not trench paved. They, they don't flatten every winter.
I really question if the structural integrity has changed on the culvert in this short of time, I don't understand how that's okay. I mean.
Right, and every single one is.
If it's compromised, it's no longer.
I talked to somebody else and I told them that that would be the excuse. And they said they'd blow that right out of the water instantly, if you're relying on that hot top to not crush the putting.
Right.
Right, that, I totally get my mind around that, because like I said, because every gravel road, you would fall back below, there's no pavement, so your culverts are all flat, and that's not what happens.
And at least one of them is, doesn't have enough cover on it. Whatever the diameter, you're supposed to have that much above it, and one of them is like that much, which isn't enough.
And because it's a plastic pipe, it has, is that what the ratio for plastic and metals different and concrete's different? Okay, and they're all plastic, okay.
There's one that's steel.
Okay.
And that one's just a straight scenario, but it's also deep.
So, kind of ironic, maybe a plastic one would work there.
So I would reach, I mean, we ought to reach out to the culvert supplier and ask them that, if the integrity is weakened.
Okay.
Yeah, should we, because now our bigger question is, do we leave these that are a little crinkled?
Right.
I, I mean, I know from past experience, once they've crinkled, they just continually get worse. They don't.
Oh, they don't uncrinkle.
And they don't stay the same.
Right, everybody's got their own opinion.
Right.
And that's why I'm saying, I'm just going by what I've seen with plastic culverts, once they start, there's no, they don't go a little and stop, I mean.
Yep, I, that makes sense to me. Yeah, I'll reach out to.
Have, would, have you ever had a scenario when you were installing a culvert, you would deliberately put a rock on top of it?
Yeah, if he was reusing an old steel piece of pipe and had a.
Right, but these types of culverts we're talking about, you wouldn't, I'm just trying to, I don't know anything about it.
I wonder what size rock it is, I mean, it'd have to be a good sized rock.
It's become the fallback reason that the culvert failed.
Yeah.
And the only way it can be there is that it was deliberately put in there. That's kind of odd.
If they brought inferior material, it's supposed to be small material.
Right, when you're, when you're.
Well, they just swapped in the old crap.
Right, right.
But when you're putting in the material back in the hole with the excavator, and you're putting, that's what I'm saying. You put in so much, you compact so much, compact, there clearly shouldn't have been a rock there, so.
Did, did he compact as he was putting?
He's supposed to.
Do we know?
They had one there.
They did?
How often?
Yeah, I don't.
They did have a nice big six hundred pound.
Yeah.
I did see it. It was either the one by Calvin Ames or it was the one down towards Irvin's, it's decent because it's steel. One of the other I went by and they had a compactor in the trench and somebody was running it.
So, I just, his, his view right now is, there's only one culvert that, in his opinion, should come out before we pave that road.
Correct.
And be redone.
And that's number nine.
Okay, and we, just so people listening, Chris Newt is here from CNW. He's also looked at these culverts because we knew we had a problem. Do you have an opinion as to how many of those should be replaced before we pave that road? Or are you working on that, or where do we?
Yeah, there was another one. At least seven and eight also.
So, okay.
So when you say at least, are you saying there's more than seven and eight that are not structurally round anymore?
Seven, eight, nine are absolute must go, in your opinion.
In my opinion.
And now we haven't, now there's some more that are.
And the rest of them are compromised.
Less than perfect.
Are there any that are A-OK?
Other than the steel culvert?
Other than steel.
The iron pipe.
And I'm assuming there, we're talking a total of nine culverts, or are there more than that, if, if that's?
Well, I think there's nine total, I think it's three is the one, if you take out the steel ones.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And then you've got the one at the bottom of the hill, the oil smog, that's been there for a long time.
Right, that's down there.
That's deep and that is squaring a little bit, and you can feel just a little bit. So, the ones that are minimal, that might be all they do and they stay right there, they might grow more.
I'd like to have the, the opinion of the manufacturer, and that's going to answer.
Well, I think that's definitely worth getting, but my, if, my concern is that this damage has been done to these culverts in one winter. And it appears that this is not, I mean, to simply say that this happened because they weren't trench paved, doesn't, doesn't make sense to most, it looks like we're all wondering how that's possible. So, if we pave these because they're in the margins, how much worse are they going to get if, if they're not put into a standard? I don't know that I trust any of them. That's, I guess that's where I'm going. Other than the iron pipe, maybe, but that doesn't mean it's failed right, it just means the iron pipe will hold up to anything.
Well, the, I mean, I can tell you, traveling it all winter, the gravel in that trench was froze all winter. It's not like, you know, if you was going to go with a frost theory, the dirt wasn't thawed and the pavement was, or the pavement was thawed and the gravel was froze.
Like an differential where it was ending up.
There was frozen ground over the top of it all winter, so the frost shouldn't have, the trench paving, to me, I would think that would be the logic, is a frost scenario, but I don't see how that would have made a difference because it was the same all winter, on both spots.
No, in fact, it begs the question, we might have spent money on trench paving and these still had failed, and then we just wasted an additional trench paving fee.
That's exactly what I'm concerned about. Especially the rock, I mean, that's not going to change anything.
No.
One of the D E P classes I went to, they talked about culverts. The number one failure for plastic culverts is compaction.
Lack thereof.
Lack of.
I know, there's actually a, like a training type seminar type thing in Skowhegan on June second.
For roads, roads?
Yeah, talks a lot about that kind of stuff though, at the fairground.
Yeah, we had a contractor that did a culvert right next to you, that did not get trench paved for that winter. The culvert didn't fail, but he did come in and widen the, there was some adjustment made after the fact, do you remember that?
Yeah, it was just a, I don't know how you want to say it, it just wailed the hell out of you, I guess.
Yeah, it was a speed bump, or it was a trench.
It still needs to come out.
It's still even, even this, it was weird, it was really good the first year, and I don't know if it was just because of last year, but this year she really dropped again too. But even the V made it better for a while, but this year you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have known it was like that.
But, did you look at that culvert, is that still around? I'll just be.
I haven't looked at it, I don't.
Can't remember if it's steel or plastic.
That's plastic.
I'll have to look at it now.
But that didn't get trench paved that winter, did it?
Yeah, it did.
It did?
The first year, yeah.
And then turned into a speed bump?
Yeah.
And then he made the V type, yeah.
Yeah, then he did the second time, it was that, I don't know, Jesus, that was twenty feet.
Ten feet on each side, kind of thing, yeah.
Geez, had to be, it was a big V.
That does that because it's on ledge with stone under it, and then the pipe, so the pipe doesn't move.
The road moves.
It's the whole road, it's got that clay base that holds it.
Oh, okay, okay.
The road goes like that.
Right, right.
And even though Steve dug it back each way.
You're not going to stop the road from doing that, right?
He didn't take it all the way to the ledge.
You would literally have to go, and that's the.
Well, now you're back to rebuilding the road.
Correct, and that's why, and I know everybody says, well, the state uses plastic, well, the state does, but the state actually, they've got gravel.
Well, they have engineered roads. They have engineered roads.
Correct, and we don't have that, I mean.
In many spots, we do not.
That's the only one that's really been an issue that he put in.
The rest of them.
The south of there is still pretty good.
Yeah.
But that's a perfect example, there are dynamics that we, you don't have any idea until you dig in the hole.
We're better off to dig them up and build that road up in that area?
Well, that was, do we, do we rebuild that road? Like, kind of like what we did it down to.
McFeeters.
Well, no, well, yeah, but I was thinking.
Oh, oh, my past, Blaine's place.
Yeah, Hartford Lane.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
We took that whole dip out, we added a lot of gravel and material to do it.
Yeah.
I think it definitely would not hurt that road to be reclaimed and six, eight inches of gravel at least put on it, at least through that.
I would say that's, if you're going to do it at all.
Put the Anderson to the corner.
Yeah.
I measured it out, it was like thirty-six hundred and fifty feet from Jerry's lawn, first seed of tree right there at the end of the Anderson, up around, just around the corner, almost to where his field, there's a telephone pole right there. Now we take in these six culverts in that section.
And raising the whole thing eight to ten inches, is that what you're?
I'd go ten and four myself.
Okay, do you have a number on that?
Oh, let's see.
Be interesting to put a transit across that road to see what that pitch really is. I still wonder if we could get rid of some of them culverts, especially if we.
I think so.
If we could raise it a foot.
Yeah, do the ditching a little.
Yeah. I mean, that's quite a few culverts in thirty-six hundred feet.
Well, and if you drive it, it's even worse to think about it, you know what I mean, once you're, and that's why I drive it every day, and to me it seems pretty flat, but to put a transit across that, then you could really see what you could do, but I would think we could get rid of a few of them. I mean, there's one real close to that corner to begin with, and the corner being, appears to be the higher point. So, I mean, I wouldn't, I think that one for sure, and maybe another one or so.
I don't have it on me.
Well, if you would just.
I thought I did, but.
If you just would get that, tell Lorna, she'll send it to us so we can, we'll have some point of reference.
I did get prices on concrete pipes. And then a couple of signs, union on steel this morning. And quite a difference.
What, what are, what's, what is it?
Concrete was about half price.
Is that right?
Concrete, half the price of steel? How's that compared to plastic?
Plastic was always cheaper than that.
But the only, but, I can tell you, only because everything we deal with at work is plastics, there is no, everybody's struggling for plastic chip, so I would think that.
That's going to go up?
I bet it already has.
If we was to put in a two-foot steel pipe, just a twenty-foot section, it was thirteen hundred and fifty-one dollars. Then you need a eighty-five dollar band, and then another piece of pipe. So you're talking twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight hundred bucks, just for one.
One culvert.
One culvert.
For five feet. Concrete, twenty-four inch, was thirty dollars, fifty cents a foot. Twelve hundred and twenty bucks.
So how long does?
Takes a little bit longer to put in eight-foot sections.
Comes in eight foot, yeah.
You slam it with an excavator and it's straight up.
And how do they hook up, Chris, is there any sort of color, or are they just?
They're like a bellend with a rubber.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 okay, sure, like a.
Those are going to be three or four inches thick. I mean, you could literally put an excavator bucket on it.
And not push through it.
And pick your tracks off them.
Wow.
In theory.
And are those, I've never seen them, are they square, but round inside? Oh, they're, the concrete ones are round?
Yeah. The eighteen-inch ones, concrete was eighteen fifty a foot.
Wow.
So that figured out like seven, four, do you think?
Just the manpower, you can't handle them in the trench like you can.
Right, you're going to have the machine, it'll take a little bit longer to put in.
Yeah. And you need a, you could, you need a substantial machine to pick this thing up, whereas a guy could go with a plastic one.
Yeah, you're going to need the same machine to dig the hole.
Right, right.
No, I, but, I could see where like, a little operation wouldn't want to touch a concrete one because it just weighs so much. But, I, it might be perfect for us.
So will each one be two parts? Would each one be two part, what are the maximum length of the concrete?
Eight foot.
Oh, eight foot.
You'd have five pieces to get across the road.
Five of them?
To get forty feet, whereas the plastic, it's two twenty-foot pieces, sell one and put a little bit on it. Take the other one, slam it.
Right, right.
Till it goes to the line.
Seems like a known writer.
Yeah, and they're, and that's deliberate?
That was a little bit out of New Brunswick.
What about deterioration, like salt and chemicals, does the concrete hold up?
State runs on it, all the big.
I, I see a lot of them, you're right, and they do have some rectangular ones.
Yeah, well, that's why I was wondering, I just physically.
The bigger, the bigger ones are square.
Square, yeah, okay, are they round inside though?
Probably last longer on the road.
They're square inside?
They got a wicked long lifespan of them. I can get more information on them.
Those are ju, I mean, the whole project, but if, and I think Dale's.
Yeah.
If you look at the idea of raising that road twelve to fifteen or whatever, makes sense, and cutting back on culverts, and using concrete versus steel or plastic, this whole thing might get manageable.
Well, then you look at it the other way, the cost that you just saved, if we could, if we could raise it a little more and reduce a few more culverts.
Bingo.
That's a lot of gravel, the.
And maybe you have a road that you're not repaving in fifteen years.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Even a yellow zero.
Welcome to my world.
Want to be a selectman?
That's, so let's, yeah, let's kind of get some numbers together.
Let's get some real numbers, I think that concept, and if you could, I would seriously look at that, throw a transit up that, see what you really think we can do as far as total number of culverts in that span. What do we have there now, what, what could we do?
They eliminated one down the south end. I think there's at least two more within that span, so that would only leave that up, it'd be three to put in. Actually, you know, rip two out, put clay back down, and build it back up so it's even.
Yeah. So you give a topic, did you end up buying that recliner?
Yeah.
Is it ready to go?
It ran when we shut it off.
Okay, that was a good start, so you plan to be reclaiming this year?
If the opportunity arises. If not, I've got a big expensive piece of iron sitting here.
Well, it's funny now, I've, I've got an eye to some bad spots, where, you know, we have roads that are, maybe eighty percent of the roads are in great shape, but we maybe have a few hundred yards where it's just completely come apart.
Just reclaim it.
Come in, reclaim that stretch, add some gravel, and then add that to your paving, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got some places on, on our road, you know, ninety percent of that road's pretty good, but some places are falling apart.
The ceramic ones, needs to be peeled out, but that had mud coming up through it when they did it last time.
The night, the corner on number ten is completely falling apart, right where number ten comes out.
Yeah, right by there.
Yes, yeah.
Exactly, that's right where that.
And there's a bad pothole coming down Mitchell Hill, not Mitchell Hill, Spalding Hill, on the right-hand side, there's a.
That was something I brought to Lois's attention.
Well, now it's going to come to everybody's attention, because when you hit this one.
Oh, boy.
And you're going, because it's.
For some reason, when that got paved from Silver's Mills down the hill, they milled it and they brought it down to that point. For some reason, they went about fifty feet of just a wafer, beyond where they milled it.
And that's why it's.
And then when it got paved from Ken Chadwick's to there, they stopped that fifty-foot wafer, now that wafer is gone.
Yeah, well, that would be another example where.
It may call it perfect since then.
We could.
I knew it when I did it, because I was by and I could tell, and I could see it, just the color difference in one dog, and it instantly started cracking.
Because there's an example, you could bring that in there, reclaim that, put that, and when you're doing your paving, you add a hundred yards and maybe fix the problem before it becomes a total disaster.
Further up the hill, where I drove my dustpan right through the road and rolled it right up, I backed I knew the skid steer, and they paved right over that.
Oh, geez.
It never got fixed.
Oh.
So that's why there's a.
Okay, yeah.
There's a ski jumper.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
On the right, on the side of the road.
Okay.
Something else, and they went like this.
Oh, gosh. Chris, how portable is the recliner? I mean, can you go, do you have to trailer it to, from point A to point B?
For the most part.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, if it's just a.
What about gravel roads with that thing?
You don't grind up gravel road, you just got gravel and mud mixed together, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'd like, these roads that get too hard to grade, I don't know if that.
That'd be an expensive way to.
Okay.
Very greater.
Well, that's also expensive.
It'd be cheaper than.
I want one.
All right, well, we've got some things to work on, numbers as soon as possible, I would say, that would be great.
What would you guys basically, Silver's Mills?
I think that's the first, that's where the money gets spent first, I think, right now.
Starts hot stuff.
Yeah, and we got to have the product ready to pave before we can pave.
We got to see where that ends up, and then that'll help us know what's left for in that whole budget, what we can do anywhere else.
When we know how much money we have, we just don't know where it's going to be allocated right now.
Ideally, what would the full scape of that be, right from twenty-three to?
The bridge.
Rockways Mills Bridge?
Yeah.
Grind it all, okay.
Grind it all, and then gravel, well, we know we need gravel that section, but as we talked before, that little bit after me, that could use a little bit to get that. But the only thing there that I wondered, and I don't know what and how or what you could do with it, but after Jerry's, part of that is because where that bog is, or wet hole of bobs, and that, the water from one side, there's a culvert, but there's nowhere, it don't go anywhere.
It's gone. So whether or not you can set up bobs field.
Right, but I think Bob's got so much ledge, I don't think there's anything you can do to get rid of that. Yeah, but, but that's the problem there, but.
Oh, it's elevate road.
Yeah, yeah.
Elevate the ditch, because the water over there, it's.
But.
Right, it's a.
I don't know if there's anything we could do on Bob's side to, to ditch back towards, I think you would have to go back towards me. Can't go the other way, because it ain't going to go anywhere either. But, I don't know, it's something to look at, but if there's, that little piece wouldn't use some gravel, it's anywhere.
And a little bit below Wilson Howard's driveway, yeah.
Yeah.
Where it's.
Yeah, that other.
Because they put about that much on it last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just one of the things that's helpful for us, because none of us, I guess, probably sometimes we pretend to know this stuff, but we really don't. But what we're dealing with right now, for, for someone to say, well, you didn't trench pave, that's why this failed, if we have a situation like, make us aware of it, and then if we decide not to do it.
Right.
Fine, it's our problem.
Right.
But it's very aggravating to have somebody come back afterwards and say, well, no wonder this happened, you didn't do X.
Right.
We're kind of relying on the contractors to tell us what X is before it's, it's a problem, so.
But we've, and the only other thing about that, that particular conversation, we've asked this question in the past to many contractors. The only thing that I've ever been told about the requirement to trench pave is it's a hell of a lot easier on your plow guy.
Yeah, no one's ever said to me, if you don't trench pave, I, these culverts I'm putting in are very likely to fail. Yeah, no one's ever said that to me.
Yeah, it almost seems as though in the contract of, of somebody putting in nine culverts, it would say, babe, you know, this is.
Yeah, asterix.
Yeah, right.
If you don't trench pave, these are likely to fail.
Right, or, or my work is not guaranteed, or my work is.
And that's, I mean, I'm just using that as an example, but anything you run into like that.
Right, you got to tell us, hey, you guys heads up, you need to do this, because we don't know, and that's, that's what we need.
That's, that's very important.
Yeah.
But I would have questioned it on that end, why, we've never heard this before.
But at least, at least it would be on our plate.
Well, it would have been something for us to investigate.
That's right, it would have been our informed decision to say, no, we're not going to, we're going to make sure it's, you know, so. And, so, yeah.
I mean, I, I could, now that you've explained a little about these cement, I could see a contractor saying, the only thing I would put in here is cement, that's it.
Right.
And it's going to take a little longer, it's got this, that, but that's all, at least then we would be the ones to decide, are we going to do it or not?
Are they reinforced with, with rebar or anything?
Yeah, some sort of steel rebar.
They are?
Within them, you can't see it.
Right, okay, sure.
So it don't run out.
Sure, okay. Have you ever put them in, Chris?
Yeah.
You have?
On Camp Road.
Okay.
And they had minimal cover, it was a USDA funded project, and they required it because there was nothing.
Right, very little.
Very minimal coverage over.
And they're okay?
I ought to go look at it again.
Yeah, that would be an interesting.
It was three years when I found that road, there were problems.
How many years ago did you put them in?
Probably in twelve.
Oh, wow, that would be worth.
Yeah, that's, that's a good example, it's a camp road, it doesn't get a ton of traffic evidently, I'm guessing, but.
It's year round.
Yeah, but not truck traffic or.
Well, there's a lot of work going on down there. Something lost cake, a little lost cake.
Oh, yeah, so it'd be worth checking it out and seeing, you know, what, how, how viable, what do they look like twelve years later, right?
Yeah, yes.
I'm excited about that.
If you go down by Lake Shaw March.
Bugby.
Stand right on Bugby.
Okay.
And lane sixty.
Oh.
Bay lane.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Six tenths a mile, all the way in there. Six tenths of a mile, all the way in there.
Down Berrane?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, that, there's a lot of camps down there.
We did more work in there after that, obviously.
Huh, that's interesting.
Six or eight year-round residents, at least.
How many culverts did you put in?
All right, um.
Five, maybe six.
Okay. Well.
Think they were twelve and fifteen inch.
Wow. Okay, and, okay. Good, well, I like that.
Okay, so you're gonna get numbers back to Lorna, and we'll revisit this soon.
I'll try to do a thorough estimation.
That's good.
Okay, anything else on this?
No.
All right, um, moving on to new business. Notice of election RSU eighty, MSAD number four, budget validation referendum, select board signatures.
So that's the, that's about it, but.
Yes.
And the election's on June fourteenth. Oh, okay.
Get signed to make sure you go in the same spot, yeah.
Okay, did we print afterwards?
No.
No.
Look at all those signatures.
Oh, and that's just for this town? Takes a lot of people to spend this amount of money.
Jeez, oh.
The night they do this is a stag, because every town gets this same amount that they have to find.
Oh, my gosh.
And if somebody signs in the wrong spot.
It, then it's all, start all over again.
It's throw it away and do another one. Hopefully it's not the last person.
Yeah.
But usually it doesn't get caught till the end.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Cemetery D, Colleen and Dennis Fornia, Bailey Cemetery.
Yes, they bought two full plots.
Um, item C, public restrooms.
I just, one question, do we, usually typically we make a motion to sell these, or whatever we do.
Mm-hmm, do we?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you?
Yes, sure, cause usually I end up doing it. Uh, let me just see where, okay, so I'll make a motion that we will sell, um, two plots uh, in the Bailey Cemetery Row three, plots thirty-one and thirty-two, lot A, B, C, D. To Dennis and Colleen, Board Number Four near.
Second. All in favor? We're all three in favor. Uh, under new business, item C, uh, public restrooms. Actually, I, I, I called Lorna and asked her to put this on here, um, the library is now closed, um, actually when we went back to budget season, Lorna essentially said, she and Sarah will take care of cleaning the office, because now it's just two people here.
Right.
And so that saved the town a lot of money, um, and so, I guess what we wanna discuss is are we under, uh, should we feel obligated to maintain public restrooms when the only two people working here have agreed to maintain the restrooms?
Right.
And so I, I asked her to put it on here so we could talk about it. I, I'll, my personal feeling is, and we should not.
Right.
Do that.
I agree, a hundred percent.
If people wanna register their ATV, they don't necessarily have to have a bathroom.
Right, if we were to have a meeting in here, perhaps, we would, there would be a bathroom, but other than that.
Maybe voting day, you might, because people have to wait in line, and, and I'd even be open, if you had those one or two events, then we might hire somebody for cleaning to follow up that event.
Right.
But, to me, it doesn't seem fair, that they, they're gonna do the cleaning and then we also say these are public restroom.
Yeah, no, they're not necessary, I don't think they're necessary, so.
So I would put up signs.
Yeah, that, before you even walk in the.
No public restrooms.
Right, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then you can blame it on the select board.
That's right.
You thought you'd put it on the website.
There you go.
And I think the park actually has public restrooms, we, we pay every month to have them down there, don't they? Yep. So, and those are available to anybody.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, item seven, Town Management Report.
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know, our absentee ballots are ready for the state primary election and MSAD budget election. And we now have the box out front, and it's marked.
Good.
Town Sangerville absentee drop box, so our residents, if they don't wanna come in, they can drop it right off in that box.
Okay.
Very good, yes.
Uh, Road Commissioner's Report.
And we were just talking, Chris said that they've already started the grading, they're doing this side of town now, Grant Road, Bean Hill, and all that will get done. And the in-town roads have been cleaned up, they're just gonna go back up and do School Street one more time, and Maple, just to get some more of the dust up, but other than that, they've done the majority of the work.
Good. Uh, speaking of the park, how's that road, has anybody been in there, does that need to be graded?
No, Chris, they're gonna put my docks in too.
Okay.
With the hammock, so probably.
Well, then you'll see over there when you do that.
You said something, I thought I'd go tomorrow.
Everybody forgets.
Can't say all right.
Yes, yes, Centipon and the hammock.
Yeah, well, it'd be nice to have them in before Memorial Day.
Yeah, it'd be very nice to have them in before Memorial Day.
Cause everybody goes boating.
And I did wanna ask, someone had brought to my attention about the corner, when you go into, that there's some branches that probably could be cut or something.
Well, you mean it on Centipon?
Yes.
Well, there's, there's a few issues down there, and we tried in the past, well, before I was a selectman, to correct it, and wasn't able to, but the town just doesn't own enough property down there. The loop, the turn, it's never been, nothing's really ever been done down there, so it's kind of overgrown, um, and it's hit or miss, the first one to get your boat in, that means you gotta place a park. And then after that, everybody basically is just trying to stuff a vehicle somewhere, so what ends up happening is, is when you do try to get down there, a lot of times you can't get in, you can't even make it through the turnaround to back a boat in. And that, that was a big issue last weekend, there were some kayakers down there, two or three different vehicles, and those, I have no idea who they were, but they definitely wasn't very respectful of the situation. They basically just unloaded the kayaks, drove up, shut the, shut the truck off. By the time those three just pickups were in there, you could not get a truck and a trailer through there anymore.
Wow.
So, I don't know, I, I, I haven't got down, I know before there was an idea about possibly even putting rocks around the, cleaning up the trees, and then putting some, some rocks, so people couldn't park at all in the center. And then maybe cleaning up on, from the road to the stone wall, and then that way there, people could park up that side. And then you could always make the loop and, but, something should be done sometime, but I don't know what we're gonna do, it's kind of a mess, really.
I've never.
There just isn't enough room to.
Yeah. And is there no sign, like, there is no signage, would signage help to, like, you can't park here?
I, I don't think it would help, I think if you, you would literally have to block it off with stones, cause.
Okay.
They don't, you know, somebody wants to park, they gotta park.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's the problem right now, is there just isn't, it's, you know, I understand those particular people, they could've parked a little better, and it wouldn't have been the situation it was, but for the most part, people do try to, but the problem, you get two trucks, two trailers, you're done. There just isn't any other room down there.
There is.
So, but I think you could, I think you could clean up that edge and make a parking.
Where is that deal?
Right across the street from my house.
From your house, down that road?
Yeah.
There, there's actually two.
Yeah. Which one do you take, the right one or the left one? Okay. All right, um, also, I was just wondering, can we going forward put selectmen's concerns on, on our agenda, just.
Yep, absolutely.
Typically, there's not, but it, it then jars me, you know.
It's a nice reminder.
It is, it is, and the reason I am asking you, because one thing, what I am getting concerned about, and we're in summer now, is that, are we, we're moving on to the next thing, right?
With selectmen's concerns.
Yeah, is, of course, the cost of number two fuel oil and this building, and, um, winter coming, and can, do you, Lorna, have any idea how much we've spent January till today on heating this building?
Almost four thousand, and we're budgeted for six.
And it's men.
And it's men. And it's men, and two people, yeah. So, um, that's, that does not bode well.
No, no, I mean, we know that this monster atrocity is gonna financially impact us, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
I mean, even the, we got repair, we got repair costs back from Carpenter, he said double everything, and since then, it's gone up probably another fifty percent, I mean, there's a million dollars just to fix the down, just to fix the foundation, I'm sure.
Right, right.
And you haven't cha-changed anything, so, we, I mean, we gotta.
If you're to spend a million dollars to fix the foundation, you still would've spent four thousand dollars on heating on the street.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, exactly, no.
And, and we haven't even started the next heating season, so. Anyway, um, you know, obviously, we, we, I just wanna, I know it's all on our radar.
Yep.
But I wanna keep it on our radar.
Yes, I agree with you.
And I keep it.
And keep posting, I think it'd be great, anytime you've, one of these numbers is bumping up against, oh my gosh, we're gonna run out of money.
It's gonna be a point where we.
Well, we're there.
Yeah, we really have to have a special town meeting to, yeah.
It's gonna be the same way with fuel for the fire trucks.
Right.
For plowing, we're gonna get hit on, we've got, we've got contractors who are gonna mow grass this year, and I, I, they don't have a provision for fuel.
No.
And I, I, I know right now, to fill up my lawnmower, my lawnmower has two tanks on it, it's, it's eighty dollars.
Yeah.
Which is unbelievable for your lawnmower.
I know, I know.
So, it's, it's gonna hit everybody.
Right, right, so, I, you know, I, I wanna continue to push forward on, on our new town ops.
Yes, I, I think, yeah, I agree with you.
So, um, if ever we can have that conversation, continue the conversation, um, with Jim Robinson.
Yeah, Robinson's is kind of a, a wild card, we need to kind of, I'd love to vet that, so that we know, uh, what, but that will play itself out, I would say, before the end of the year.
Okay, good, good, very good.
All right, anything else?
No, well, I do, let's, I have, in June, we have five Wednesdays, start on June first. So I thought, so I wanted to see how you wanted to schedule.
Okay.
Select board meetings, I have June eighth tentative.
Well, if, if, if you get numbers from Chris, and anything else that comes up, we'll meet next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to get.
We wanna get stuff going.
Between getting that ground, culverts, all that gravel, and being able to schedule at least a base coat of paving?
You know how quickly the summer goes.
That's why, the sooner we need to get going on that, the better.
So, yeah, if, if we've got things to address, we'll meet every week, we don't care.
And the other thing that Lorna had mentioned, I got it.
Um, Chad would like to get together with us, cause I had questioned some, uh, the fire truck taking it down and failing, and he can't meet until after six o'clock on a weekday, so he wanted to try to have a meeting with us, but I didn't know either, maybe.
It'll be Saturday morning.
Saturday morning.
Yeah, yeah, we're open, yeah.
No problem, it's a problem.
More flexible.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll check with him again and just, and we did get in the gas cars for the fire truck, so we, I mean, we still have some fuel left in that tank up there, but.
Okay.
I would, I would think we oughta consider just selling the tank and get rid of it.
You might wanna check, see if Robinson's own that tank.
The one in our building?
I almost think they do.